I'll do the non-public.
Sure.
Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order for the Dunbar Board Selectment Meeting for Thursday, July 11th. We've got all three selectmen present, town administrator, recording secretary present. We do not have a video recorder. I understand it's a logistics issue of getting personnel here, so we're not on the video tonight. We have a short meeting tonight, so it shouldn't be terribly controversial. I have old business, I have minutes to approve gentleman from two weeks ago.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the June 27th regular board of selectmen's meeting minutes as amended.
I'll second Bob's motion.
Okay. And discussion, I just want to say for the recording secretary, he did a great job for not being here.
Thank you.
He really was. There was one portion that I thought, there was a little discussion, we gotta be careful, Dave had a discussion with the town clerk, there was some kind of, would've been a one or two sentences we should've included next time.
Okay.
Just, it didn't have any bearing at the end, but it was, Dave pointed it out to me. Okay, gentleman, any further discussion on the minutes?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dave, Mr. Collins. We have one non-public gentleman from last meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of June 27th, 2019. What time on those, Mike?
It was, time was eight, 8:11 PM.
Eight eleven.
Second.
Any discussion on those minutes? I thought they were pretty straightforward, hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Bob will go first, gentlemen, it's a non-public. Okay, I'm gonna open up for public comment, just please state your name, please state your name and we'll go from there. Anything for public comment, that's the first row? Nope, you're on the agenda twice, sir.
Brian Pike, Crystal Road. It's open to ask if you guys want to be able to take care of a tree. It's in the town's right-of-way, it's supposed to be in my property line with a neighbor. But it's ancient, I used to farm when I was a kid.
Okay.
But it's dying, the branches are falling, left and right, to pull some out of the road, put them on the side, I haven't cut off the branches yet, and pulled away, but...
Is it, is it in the right-of-way of the road?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Just past your garage, Brian?
No, no, it's towards, it's the south side.
The other end?
Yeah.
Okay. I think we can have the road agent go down and take a look at it.
Yeah, well, he and I talked about him a couple of years ago, and there's two of them there, one is in really good shape, it's still nice and green, and the other one is dying and is hardly any green, and what green is, is on my side of the stone wall, but the towns, on the towns, stone wall on the town side in the road is, it's all dead, and the branches are falling and whatnot.
Okay.
Before it becomes a true hazard for anybody driving by.
Alright, aye.
But we mentioned it to you guys.
Consensus, does it send the road agent down there?
Sure.
We'll have the road agent take a look at it and see what we can do.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Just the address of your home?
Two Crystal Road.
Two Crystal, number two. Just for the minutes.
Well, actually technically it's the second piece of property, so I think it's actually four.
Okay. Can do. Alright, I'm gonna close public comment, and Dave, if you give me a donation?
Yep. I'll just give you a brief description of this donation first. The KTSCA members and committee had talked with the neighbor Donna Dunn about spraying the barn foundation in the fog field.
Mm-hmm, that's across from her property?
Yep, and they wanna spray that foundation to try and get some of the vegetation back on there, they're also gonna do a little bit of brush cutting by hand, I think, in between the spraying applications. But Donna and Andy Dunn were nice enough to donate this year's applications, which I understand could be up to four, four to five applications on that site, so I'd like to make a motion, per RSA 31, colon 95 dash B, room number three, paragraph B, to accept the donation of 115560 from Donna and Andy Dunn to purchase True Green Chemicals and application to manage the overgrowth of the foundation of the fog field. And this has been approved, and I believe the contract's been signed by your committee, correct?
It's, they've been notified, and we've signed the contract.
Okay, great. That's it?
And I'll second that.
I don't have any discussion with that, and hearing discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And Lean, do you have the check?
I will.
Okay.
It's a very generous donation by the Duns, and I wanted to show express our thanks to them, yeah.
My appreciation.
Yeah.
So, we'll deposit this into the Can Canwick Town Forest?
Yeah, and they can make payments as they need to.
And they can withdraw payments as they need to. Yeah, okay.
Do I understand this correctly, and just a question on, you gonna have herbicide applied, town is?
On that foundation only, yeah.
Is it being done by a license?
Yes, it's gonna be done by...
True Green Company.
Okay, 'cause I know the state of Hampshire, if you're a municipality, a state, or a business, you can't do it.
No.
It has to be done by a licensed applicator.
True Green is, yeah, it's right there.
Cool.
Yeah, okay. Alright, and we have...
Did you get our appreciation, thanks to the Duns?
Yes, okay.
Just make sure that's in the minutes.
Alright, now, come on up, sir. I understand we have a grant.
We do.
Alright, we're basically, per RSA, we're here to accept the grant for 3504.98 for the First Responders Comprehensive Addiction Recovery Act, FRC TARA.
Right.
Thomas, tell us about it.
Sure, so we got this grant last year, we're still currently in that grant cycle from last year. What this allowed us to do is increase first responder training related to opioid overdoses. We hosted a community event where we taught CPR, and we're able to pass out some free nasal Narcan kits. One of our officers got certified as a recovery coach, so for individuals that are currently in recovery, if we have a police response there, he can kinda take more of a, I guess a social work angle instead of a law enforcement angle, if appropriate. And it's also allowed us to reach out to some families in town that have family members or know people that are struggling with addiction or in recovery, and provide them with some resources as well, so...
So this is a continuation of the grant?
Exactly, it's a federal grant, trickle-down to the states, this particular grant is for the third and final year of the program, and essentially the grant would sustain the program and efforts that we put into place this year.
Okay, great. Who's the officer that's contraining?
Jason Patton.
Jason Patton, yeah, very good. Okay, do I have a motion, gentleman? To, I'll make a motion to accept the grant for 3504.98 for the First Responders Comprehensive Addiction Recovery Act. I need a second.
I'll second your motion, Mike.
And all in favor? Any discussion on this, any further discussion?
No, I think it's great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Don't go away.
Yep, I'll be right there.
Alright, next item, we have a review of quarterly expenses and revenues. Lean's got a spreadsheet here, I believe?
Do I have two of them, Lee?
Yeah, one is the revenues, and one is the expenses.
Expenses and revenues, who am I gonna start with, Mike?
Um, Lean, I'm gonna let you walk us, talk us through this, let's talk with the expenses, budget expenses first.
Okay, so this is your operating budget in detail, without detailed expenses, but the accounts in general. We, I ran the report through...
It ends on what day, through June?
It would technically be the last week of June.
Okay.
But where we're in the first week of July, the only way, this is a new, they did some updates in BMSI, and I'm not crazy about it, but in order for you to see the first column, last page, the total budget that was approved at town meeting, I had to run a report from January to December, 'cause I noticed the first time I ran it, it showed a false number for total fund consolidation.
So it takes us through a little bit through into July?
It's, we've got one week into July, so you'll see that some of them, that 48% is just pretty much one additional week of payroll in that category. But for the most part, when you get to the very bottom, we're still at 56% to date, but obviously there are some departments that do not expend their funds until the later part of the year.
Well, some are going right along, though.
Yep.
Yeah, so we're ahead of schedule, 64%. Police departments, I don't know if that's good.
Forty-seven, yeah, that's good.
Now, that's remaining, was there?
Yeah, and so, that's still in the high 40s, I like that.
Well, we should be at 50% right now.
True, but 47 is pretty close to the committee.
Okay.
Highway department's still got a lot of reserve.
Yep, Jeff's usually pretty good about that, he is not, still has a lot of big projects in the highway paving, you can see that he's hardly spent any there. He does reserve a lot of funding for road salt, winter contractors, that sand, that type of thing, so those are big numbers in there. I don't see anything that really stands out, that's gonna be...
Well, let us, have, take the opportunity for us to study it, and if we have any questions, I can bring them up.
Bring it back.
Bring it back next, next meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, that sounds great.
And the second, second one is...
Any questions that you can see that, I don't see anything that really stands out? And then the next one is our revenues, again, in order to give you a true number of what we were anticipating to budget, prior year revenues in column one, and current year budget is in column three, so we are above 50% right now, we're at, we have 48.7 remaining to collect for the remaining months, so I think...
Land juice is right on target, that's good to see.
Yep, 50%, there are a few out there, I'm not sure if it's because she hasn't exported it, but we're pretty close to where we should be for revenues. Again, you're not gonna see the highway block grant coming in until the end of the year, that should be 100% collected, flood control will be another one, that's 100% collected, rooms and meals is another one, so even those three numbers are close to 200, over $200,000 combined, so you can see that we are looking really good, if we're, overall budget, 48% remaining.
No, Chief pointed something out to me, how the special duties become a revenue center for him almost, and looking at what we compared last year, 13 versus nine, the first column is a year, a year to...
It's a full year.
Full year.
This is only half a year.
Chief was right on, spot on, he's collecting a lot more in special duty pay.
Flood control comes at the end of the year, Lean?
Yes, it does, yep, those are the big ticket items that come at the end of the year.
That's if you have a budget.
I'm sorry?
That's if you have a budget.
Oh.
Now, wasn't there some additional state funding that's gonna come available to us later on this year also?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
You didn't hear that?
Nope.
No.
I thought that fell through, didn't you hear about that at one point?
Yeah, actually, you have a letter there from the governor?
Yeah.
The money we were gonna get?
Yeah.
Is tied up in the new budget that he vetoed.
Right. But we may know something in October, but I think we just don't plan on it.
Yeah, yeah.
There's gonna be some negotiations at the state level.
That's one year we got that bridge and highway funding in October.
Exactly. Okay, I reserve to ask questions, gentlemen, and just if you see, I'll see any questions, we can bring them up at the next meeting again, okay? So we'll have to look at it all night long.
I think we're right on the mark, though.
Yeah, that's good. I appreciate you getting this out to us quarterly so we can keep...
Tabs on, thank you.
Yeah.
It's important.
Alright, I'm gonna go right to mailbox items. Gentlemen, if you haven't seen these, these are our monthly reconciliations, these are for the first three months of the year, I saw no issues with that, they needed, require a signature. We still need to have Hayden to come in.
Matt Angel, yes, I plan on scheduling him in.
And I'll come in and go through these a little bit now, too.
I've learned a lot from him, he's very thorough and...
Okay, I'm gonna go through the inbox real quick, mailbox items, we got a beautiful letter from the, from the governor, basically, all his promises, but we don't have anything yet, it's all up in limbo, I'll leave it at that, it seems that's a, it's almost got a political stance to it. One of the items we looked at, we approved last year...
I read it the same way.
One of the items we approved last year was the bathroom renovation at the transfer station, and we put some money aside, the contractor has defaulted on that, not defaulted, but basically, cannot do it, so we asked, got another quote today from someone else, and the quote came in, very competitive, he just added a few more things for flooring, he felt, he felt it was gonna cost a little bit more for flooring, but he felt vinyl plank is, was probably not a good idea, I liked his, what he, he has deck over paint, it's a little bit more expensive, but I'm not talking about breaking the budget. Gotta realize that we had $2,423 already encumbered from last year, so we're talking about maybe another 1,300 plus, maybe 200, another, like $1,500 more.
That's if you choose the vinyl plank.
Correct. No, the paint, the...
The paint itself is only 7.50.
Okay.
I'm gonna give these to Bob, and I'll review those with you, Mike.
Yep.
We got that list here.
This doesn't have to be signed, though, right?
It does.
It does have to, you have to...
So he's...
You have the previous bid right there, right, Mike?
Yes.
What's the total cost on that?
Twenty-four, twenty-three.
And his total on here?
It's gonna be, if you look at, you gotta look at three things, it's 2,330, plus about $200 additional for a better fan, okay, sort of 2,530, and then we have a decision to make on the back.
The floor.
The floor, which would be...
But the floor was included in the other...
Right.
At that number.
Right, but he's doing a little bit, he's offering something a little bit different.
Yeah, but he did, he offered vinyl plank, Mike, for 1,300.
Right.
And then he said the tile option was 1,375, 'cause he can get the...
Right.
Used or discontinued tile at Home Depot for $2 a square foot, so what we need to know is if that vinyl plank is in that 23.
Which I'm looking right now, flooring, installed new vapor barrier, installed new commercial grade laminate flooring, it was supposed to be in here.
Yeah, but I'm wondering if he just gave it a breakdown there, but it is in there.
I don't believe it is, that was something, only because he, he put it separate because he doesn't recommend the vinyl plank.
What he's recommending is something a little bit less costly, deck over paint, correct?
Well, no, he recommended going, I think, with the tile.
Tile, right, there you go.
Tile or the deck over paint, so that is really easy to clean, fills in cracks, and you can scrub it, it doesn't wear out as quickly.
So we have three options, vinyl, tile, or the deck over paint.
Yeah.
Did you see that now, Dave?
I do, I just, I don't like that it's not included in this...
No, he didn't, no, he did not, he kept it separate.
So it's realistically 13 to 1,500 more than the two previous.
Correct, exactly, spot on.
If you read that bottom paragraph on the front page, it says that the vinyl planking is water resilient and scratch resistant, but it's not waterproof or scratch proof, so he said the, it's a floating floor.
In the bathroom?
Yeah, and it, and it has a very small window of temperature that it works best in, and he asked Woody specifically, does it get cold in here, or does it get really hot, and it does, so that's, you know, the reason why he's not recommending that vinyl plank stuff.
I'm, I'm looking at the lower-cost item there, just the deck over paint, can't be replied in the future. What do you think?
You're probably better off with that than the tile, 'cause the tile, at some point in time with the traffic, I mean, not that they use it a lot, but when they're going in and out of there, you know?
What was the...
The vinyl plank?
Price-wise?
Twenty-four, twenty-three.
No, the other one, there was two there, I think.
That was just Mr.?
No, there's two there.
There was a two.
Yeah. They're both there.
Yeah, let me take it, I'm gonna find it. Oh, this was even less, this was... Yeah, he was gonna have commercial grade sheet vinyl flooring installed with, I mean, a supply installed baseball, it was 2232, that was last November. Bob Cummins, any?
Well, no, I was gonna say, the vinyl plank anyways, if there's a lot of change in temperature, the coefficient of expansion, it moving back and forth, when it warms up, it moves, that, there's a resin underneath, and that resin leaks out, I know through experience, so I don't think that's a good option. It looks good when you first put it down, in the summertime, it'll be nice.
I'm okay with the deck over paint.
Yeah, I think that's a better option.
And the $200 additional for that higher CFM fan, I think is a good idea, those cheaper fans, just do not cut it and hold up, they just rattle.
Yes, so he did say he was gonna inspect it, and if it passed, met the codes, 'cause he's very, he does a lot of work for other towns, and some of the towns are very meticulous with their code enforcement, making sure everything complies, so he's very careful about what he installs, so he said if it, if it meets the criteria, it won't need to be replaced, but he suspects from the sound of it and the look of it, it probably needs to be replaced, but...
We're talking about $900, if you count the, the deck over paint, we're talking about $900 of all we have committed.
We'll know a little bit more, Mike, it's all over.
Over, over that one, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause this would be 2.75 for the installation.
Correct, 2.75 plus the 7.50.
The problem is, it's such a small job, it's gonna be hard to get many more people in there.
No, I couldn't agree more.
I'm sure that's why these two don't wanna come back and do it.
Yep, I mean, I just think it was, he overbid himself, I mean, not underbid, but he just, I'm happy with this one.
So I think I told...
Timeframe, he said he could come in and do it?
Very shortly, whatever.
I mean, we put it off all last year, not getting it done because those guys didn't show up, so...
Yeah, so my total comes up to 3325.
No, 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 with the...
With, with the 7.50.
Okay, with the 7.50, okay.
And the 2.75.
2.75, and then 2,330.
Right.
Comes to 3325, oh, I did not, yep, I did include the light, if it needs to be replaced.
And then subtract 2423 from that?
Yep.
And that's how much more we addition up from this year's dollars.
Turn the line up now, unless...
Nine hundred and $2.
So we're asking for nine, I think that's reasonable.
You might as well get it done.
Yep. Uh, we have consensus, gentlemen?
I think so.
Alright, make it happen, Lean.
Okay, now, the, I also had him come through, they also had him come through my office to look at the things that we had brought up at joint loss, and we have a door that's in my office that sticks, and it doesn't stick just during the summer, it sticks during the winter as well, so it's definitely something that needs to be adjusted and or plane down so that we can open it properly if there's an emergency.
That's a rear door?
Yep, and that will also include adjusting our...
Closers.
Closers, because when he looked at them, he noticed, he said that they don't look old, they look similar to the one he installed at the library, and that one works extremely well, but he said there are three adjustments on it, so he'll look at all three, and then make sure that the doors are closing properly, so slowly, and then whatnot, 'cause it's...
So with that, and the fire department repairs?
Fire department as well, we went and looked at, they need a grippable hand rail to go down in the basement.
There's no, you walk down to something?
And we decided, and I checked with Mike Cummings, to put the hand rail on the left because there's a makeshift one on the right, but it might be the way, they might've installed it that way because they bring in a lot of big equipment, so it doesn't quite go all the way down, but there is room on the left to put a structure plus the hand grip on the left, which won't get in the way of bringing their equipment down.
He can do the leveling of the concrete, too?
And the leveling of the concrete, he's got a, he's got a sander.
It's like, it's like the, almost a, go to, push now, three quarters of an inch, almost, ah, three quarters, a half an inch, it's a trip hazard.
Yep.
So for another 550 dollars for those items.
Yeah. I have no problem with that, I, that really falls in the realm of the town administrator you could add, but just courtesy of us to know.
This is the gentleman that we reached out to to try to get him on, someone on board for handyman things, eventually, I won't be coming before the board to say, hey, I had to have something fixed, but this is giving us the opportunity to see what kind of work he does, he's done the library door, she's very pleased with it, he's very professional, he wants to follow codes and whatnot, so very conscientious in that area, so...
I don't have a problem, those items have been...
On our joint loss issues for a while.
Yeah, so it's important to keep those joint loss items going.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Lean.
Yes, you're welcome.
Alright.
Margaret.
Okay, we have an update from the transfer station, just to let you know that there was a failure in the trash compactor Wednesday evening, you all read this?
It's like a little over a week to fix it.
Yep, and so Woody's, I think he's spot on with all the steps he's doing to, maybe a little bit overtime, but he's, he's doing the right stuff, so I was very pleased with his communication here.
Yeah, I was as well, and he's bringing in a couple extra...
Dumpsters.
Dumpsters, so he'll be able to swap them out, and his crew's, you know, watching everything going in there too, to try and make sure, so...
And for the record, I've been, I've been watching, is the emails going back and forth between Lean and that, I have no, I think things are going smoothly with that, with him.
I am hearing too, and might've been one of you guys as well, but the public is saying that the place looks really good, transfer station is really clean and...
Were you guys able to meet without a new employee that wanted to?
No, nope.
No?
He only just responded, and...
Okay, it was a little too late?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've asked him to get in touch with me and with Woody so we can schedule stuff like that.
Alright, gentlemen, there's a model from the Concord, the home town officials banners, I read it, I, I think we don't need, I don't think we need this.
Is it gonna have our name on it or anything, Mike, or is it just another flag?
It's not a flag, it's a whole, mainly for Concord, it's not gonna have anything here.
No.
So I, I put that in, it was nice that they invited us, but we don't need to worry about that. Alright, my favorite now, we got the monthly report from the town building department, and we recall last month, there was something on there, was a, it was a, they were involving the building, the road agent going down inspecting the stuff, and we were getting concerned because it was incomplete. This is information only, this is not for action, thing is, if there's a problem in the building department, they will surface a problem where we may have to be acting upon something, they will surface it to Lean first, Lean will interject from the town manager point of view, she can't solve it, it'll be brought to our attention. This is just an overview, again, we can, we can talk to them indirectly, but some of the stuff is incomplete, but it's work in progress, it's still working.
You noticed I didn't react, right?
So I just wanna make sure that we understand that anything you read on here, you have got questions, we can ask them, but the thing is, we shouldn't get overly concerned on here, because it hasn't reached a level of, of a crisis, it's work in progress.
I'm in agreement with that.
Okay.
And this is the first team that's been in that department that has provided the board with this type of information.
It's nice to know what's going on in different projects.
Very helpful.
We get calls from the public.
For the public, what we're asking for, we ask for a monthly report of, an overview of what's happening in the department, but sometimes we, we read too much into it, because it's still a work in progress, it's still being worked, and we think, oh, we have to do something about that, and so we're taking that step backwards, and they'll let us know, the department is, if there's a problem, they're gonna let us know, so we don't have to necessarily, necessarily jump into it every, every time we see something that's controversial. There is controversial stuff over there, but they're in on it, so I'll leave it at that. Okay.[1683.33] And, sir, you're up again. Talk to me. About a grant?
Oh, no, that's...
You just talked about...
No, I know.
Yep.
No, but this is, uh, this is the same one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the next thing.
Don't go away. Um, then you take that for action.
I think I need to notarize it.
Okay.
So...
Can we get that done tonight, so you can run with it?
Yeah, yeah, I can.
Sign it, right?
Uh...
I think it's...
Last page?
I have been on there.
Yes, there's, yes.
You have to sign the last page, yeah. Go back to open up the public.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna open up the public comment again. Brian, blast roll.
Yeah, um, granted for the opening thing like that, I think it's a, um, outstanding idea, and the party, we got it, and most of the people personally that are affected by it, and it's, I, well, appreciate it.
Uh, the person who does the writing, right, is right here, so you're, it's, you're being acknowledged, sir.
Thank you.
So, my, I kudos to this gentleman, because, uh, the chief may be the chief, but the thing is, uh, he's got a good secondhand man there. Anything else for the, this is open to public now? Okay.
Um, I was notified by the Concord Marter, they're actually printing a story tomorrow about the portable speed sign, so I sent them some, uh, data, they came out, took some pictures, and I guess the reporter commutes on thirteen every day, saw the sign, called up, what's, what's, what's the deal with this, how did you acquire it? So explained the grant process, I believe they reached out to highway safety as well on the state hall, so there should be a, a nice story tomorrow, bring some attention to the sign and what we're trying to accomplish with it.
I think it's helpful coming over that hill, because, you know, it's easy to come down in a town going fast.
Yeah, yeah.
It's even slowed me down a little, so. Very little, I couldn't keep up.
Okay. Okay, bring it back to the board, I'm gonna talk with Lean, what do you have for the group?
I don't have anything for you, I think I've got, got, covered everything that I need to talk about during the meeting.
Okay. Dave, you...
Um, no, I'm just gonna follow up with Jeff Trecker on the engineering for that, um, library building.
Yeah.
Structure and try and...
I did send him an email right after we talked about it, and then he hasn't...
So I'll check with him, I'm sure he got busy again, but he was, he'd promised to get through that, so I'm gonna check with him on that.
Okay, Bob? Okay, I got two items, and again, and I talked to Lean about it, but I would hope you could reach out to Paul Mardzaleski again and ask him to get his lift and take a look at why we found slate, old slate on the ground from the roof, 'cause that wasn't there before. And, you know, we're getting closer to the whole home day coming up, you have people all around there, if slate falls, I want him to know that he's got a responsibility, and that responsibility is, even if the town is sued, the town is gonna come back on him also. Didn't he have, didn't he say back to us he was gonna come in like the week of Fourth of July?
Week after the Fourth. I read his email again, it was after the Fourth, but...
Tomorrow's the week after the Fourth again. Now, I mean, it keeps getting pushed further down the road, and I understand they go out and do estimates, so they might wanna service their customers, it's too bad we're not on tape, 'cause I don't have a problem with them hearing my concerns. So that's number one. And number two is only 'cause there's a few people on that road now that are calling me, is to find out from Jeff if he got the signs for Tenny Hill Road. He told me he'd have them either late last week or this week, and if he gets them, to make sure he puts them up.
The speed limit time, too.
Someone else took Leo's place as far as complaining, there's a couple of them, so.
We can, uh, we can put the sign up there as well.
But the thing is, road agent had it, he actually purchased it.
Right, the, um, the portable speed sign.
Okay. That'd be interesting.
Yeah, that's a twenty-five mile, you know, on that, yeah. Yeah, so that, that would help for the first few weeks to have, know.